Our invocation will be offered by Pastor Jerry Storrs. Is Jerry here? Following Pastor Storrs, we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Supervisor McClure. Thank you. Please stand those wish to participate.
Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Kevin, Jeffrey, Mike, Stephen and Jeff, that guided by your Spirit, they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinal County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Storrs and Supervisor McClure. Welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting December 18th, 2024. To begin with, we have Supervisor Kavanaugh. Is he online?
Chairman Supervisor Kavanaugh has advised that he will not be attending the meeting until after the consent agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so we have item number one, which is the county manager's report information only.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Today I wanted to give a little shout out to ACO, which is the Arizona Association of Counties. Last week, they had their annual summit, and there's a couple of remarkable things that came out of that. But maybe first, just for everybody's awareness, let me read who they are, what they do. The Arizona Association of Counties is a nonprofit organization that represents all of the county officials and the governments they serve in the state of Arizona. Founded in 1968, ACO provides essential services to the state counties. ACO advances issues with the state and federal government, improves the public understanding of county government, assists counties in finding and sharing innovative solutions through education and research, and provides value-added services to save counties and taxpayers money. At this last summit, our treasurer, Mr. McCord's office, won an award called the 2024 Summit Award in Information Technology for the OPEX Automation of Tax Bill Remittance. Mr. McCord is also a past president of the association. And then we also had our recorder, Ms. Dana Lewis, become the third vice president of the association. So it'd be great if either one or both wanted to come up and say a little bit about what it is and what they do and what they've been honored with. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Ladies first.
But you won the award.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the Board of Supervisors, Dana Lewis, your county recorder. Last week, we did, we attended the annual conference of ACO, the Arizona Association of County Officials. And what that organization does for the constituents of Pinal County without them knowing is it creates a vessel and a highway of information between us as county officials and the people who are working with the legislature to create better laws in Arizona. And how it works with the county officials is we're the source of information for our offices. So we're able to work with lobbyists to make sure that the information that's coming down the stream is going to be usable in our spaces. And so really, that's what we are, is we're there to advocate for our needs as departments. So when we're appointed into these positions or elected into them, we are doing our best to make sure the needs of Pinal County are heard.
And congratulations on your appointment.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Treasurer Mike McCord. This is a unique opportunity. I think ACO is one of the organizations that helps us as elected officials out quite a bit, because one of the things that they do is lobby for the affiliate groups, the recorders, the treasurers, assessors, and the sheriffs, constables. When bills are being brought up down at the legislature, they watch them for us, they steward our bills through to get good bills passed and to protect taxpayers. Our office has put forward on several occasions now for awards within that organization, and I'd just like to run through them. In 2019, we won the Summit Award as well as Innovation of the Year. In 2021, we won the Summit Award and the Merit Award. 2022, we won the Summit Award and the Innovation of the Year Award. And this year, we won the Summit Award again for information technology and the OPEX machine. I don't know if you remember, several months back, we came and did a video with the OPEX machine, what it has done for our office in expediency, where it used to take us sometimes weeks, if not a month, to process mail. We can process a tray of mail now in about eight hours. So the expediency of that, the time savings, the cost savings to the county are tremendous. We don't have to pay people overtime anymore. We don't have to have part-time staff come in during tax season. So that benefits all of us as a whole to reduce that amount of money being spent. We've already recouped the cost of that machine in pretty much the year that it's been operating. So I'm very pleased to bring the award today to show everybody that we are working hard for our taxpayers here in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. If you're all right, let's do it. Can we get a picture, guys? Get my voice ready. He's coming. Three, two. Nice, we're gonna do another one. Three, two, one. Beautiful, standby, just make sure.
Must be time for Christmas bonuses.
Yeah. Okay, we're good. Yeah. Is that it, Leo? Okay, item number two, presentation certificates of services of the employees for 20 and 30 years. Leo.
Thank you, Chairman. Today, we have the privilege of honoring three of our long-term employees. First, in development services, we have Dedrick Denton. Our planning manager has been here 20 years and recently worked really hard and did a great job educating and developing our Road Maintenance and Improvement Fund extension. So thank you, Dedrick, and it's been great working with you and hope for many more years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Chairman, Vice Chair, Board, Joe Ortiz, Pinal County Development Services Managing Director. Yeah, as Leo mentioned, Dedrick's one of those valued employees, those valued employees that I would consider him a utility employee, and Chris will probably back me on this later. He's one of those individuals that whenever there's an item or a need that happens, Dedrick's the guy that if it doesn't fit in somebody's niche, he picks it up and rolls with it, no questions asked. And that's a value to me, is those employees that just are wanting to take, that they're not saying, well, that's not my job. This guy, everything's his job. And he received this utility experience here at the county 20 years ago in a variety of places. He originally started, I think, in 2004.
Yes.
In 2004, with the community development side of the world as a planner. So he had numerous years, I'd say 10, 12 years, 10, 12 years in the community side, absorbing the site plan, the zoning, the building, the subdivision, the plating, all that was absorbed. And then we had the luxury of, in 2016, he moved into the public work side of the world as a transportation planner, more of the civil and transportation, long-term transportation. That's value, because then you have that person that can make that connection from the community development and the public work side and not skip a beat. That's very valued. And I think you even had time with economic development for a while back when Tim Kenevil was around. So that's another aspect. So that's where he gets this utility mindset that is so valued and so appreciated on our side. Today, he's actually moved up and advanced, and he's one of our, he is our transportation planning manager. So with that, it's a great pleasure, great guy, and I appreciate we will be able to get another 20 years because he's young enough, so.
He is, he is the only young guy that I know of that puts gray in his beard so that he looks older. Chris, you want to say a few words?
Thank you. Chris Wanamaker, county engineer. Yeah, I've known Dedrick for a very long time, and I've actually had the pleasure of being his supervisor the last few years. And what Joe said is true, Dedrick is, he's great. He's a star employee. He's someone you definitely want to have on your team, on your side, because if there's something weird that, hey, I need an answer to this, or track this down, Dedrick's the guy to do it. He's got this varied experience. He's smart, he's a go-getter, he likes to get stuff done. It's just been great. And like Joe said, I really hope we get another 20 years out of you. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, Joe and Chris, for the kind words, and Leo as well. And I just want to actually say that I'm just grateful for the opportunity to serve the folks in Pinal County over the last 20 years. I'm also fortunate to have the opportunity to work with a lot of people within the county and also outside the county. So I just want to say I'm just grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jibet Franco from Public Health, who's been with us for 30 years, and I'm sure has, my memory serves me right, has been a utility type of person also. Thanks.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Supervisors, Corey Redden, Deputy Director of Public Health and Emergency Management. I'm speaking on behalf of Director Mendoza today as she's out of the office. So on behalf of Marissa Mendoza, Health Director, the Infectious Disease and Epidemiological Surveillance Division Manager, Zia Helgeson Budris, your colleagues, fellow team members, and myself, congratulations, Jibet, on your 30 years of service to Pinal County. You don't look a day over 30, so I don't know how this is accomplished, but it is. I do want to say a few words, actually a lot, because 30 years is a lot. Jibet Franco started at the Health Department in January of 1994, working in the Tuberculosis Control Program and the Communicable Disease Program. She conducted influenza surveillance each flu season for the Health Department in these roles. From 1994 to 2004, she worked in our vital records division, verifying deaths and home births in the county. In 2004, she transferred to clinical services as a case manager for the Family Planning Program and the Well Woman Health Check Program. She ensured eligible clients were properly screened for breast and cervical cancers and connected them to medical services for further screening and treatment of cancer. Since 2014, Jibet has worked as a communicable disease investigator lead in our infectious disease and epidemiological surveillance division for the sexually transmitted infections and HIV section. During her tenure, she has responded to measles outbreaks. She was a part of the novel H1N1 influenza response in 2009, including mass vaccination at three clinics. She's a part of the Ebola response in 2014, the Zika response in 2015, the COVID-19 response in 2020, which also included vaccine points of dispensing operations in 2021. She's a part of the monkeypox outbreak in 2022, and she had everybody dialed in on who was eligible to receive vaccination to prevent monkeypox in our sexually transmitted infection population. So as you can see, she served the community in all things public health. Oh my gosh. She has unwavering dedication to the clients and the community she serves. She cares about the outcomes of her clients. She will not rest until everyone has received proper screening, testing, and above all else, necessary and vital treatment. For one, syphilis, a very dangerous sexually transmitted infection. This can be fatal to an unborn baby, especially to the mother who is carrying the infection. If we don't get that required antibiotic therapy into that mother before the baby is born, fetal death may occur, is likely to occur. And if by chance the baby is born, they face a high likelihood of suffering devastating birth defects, devastating. Jibet hunts high and low to find these mothers in our county. Amazing. And above all else, she just recently received an inaugural award, the Disease Intervention Specialist Greatest of All Time Award for Linkage to Care. This is a national award. And it was presented by the California Prevention Training Center. Yes, she is a GOAT, by far. I'm honored, I'm humbled. Thank you, Marissa, for not being here today, because I get to talk about her. Thank you, Jibet.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors of the Board. My name is Zia Helgeson Budris. I am the Division Manager of the Infectious Diseases Epidemiology Surveillance Division with Public Health. And I came unprepared, because I like to speak from the heart, and it is easy to do so for Jibet. I have had the opportunity to work with her as a peer for the last three years and as a supervisor for the last two. And I can say confidently that I would not want anybody else on my team, and I would not want anybody else representing Pinal County. She works tirelessly every day with far more than she should have to carry, but there is a lot of work to do, and she bears it beautifully. She is one of the most patient, kind, and hardworking people I have ever had the opportunity to know and to work with. She has always had time for any question I have, no matter how great or small, and the same question over and over and over again. She is a remarkable woman who has been so wonderful to have on the team, and I can say from a personal and professional standpoint, she is one of the largest assets to this community as a whole. Thank you, Jibet.
Well, Jibet, you are now the utility GOAT. Thank you, Jibet. The last person we have on the list, I don't believe is present with us today, but we would like to honor Roy Van Gordon for 20 years of service in the sheriff's office and currently a deputy sheriff. And I don't know if Chief Thomas or Sheriff Lamb are here, that, any words. Sheriff-elect Tippel, thank you.
Thank you, County Manager, Chairman Goodman, members of the board. I'd just like to point out that the reason that Roy Van Gordon's not here today is because he cares about putting really bad people in prison where they belong. See, he works our computer lab, and he downloads and breaks into phones and computers and gets stuff like child pornography and puts those people in prison where they belong. And he cares more about that than anything else in the world. It also speaks volumes with the fact that, see, Roy actually started with the assessor's office. He worked three years at the assessor's office before we went through the academy together 17 years ago. And he has some of his fellow academy mates in the audience today, and also our academy sergeant, then Sergeant Viegas, now Captain Viegas, here to honor him. So thank you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy, for keeping us safe wherever you're working right now. Chairman, that's it for our list. If you want to take pictures.
Yeah, if we could. Let's do it. I thought you were just having a hard time finding your pitch. No, no, sorry. There you go. Coming right behind him. Your head, sorry. There you go. Scoot in, scoot in. You guys are over his shoulder. Over, over. Step back a little bit, because then we can tighten up the space. Come forward a little bit. There you go. There you go. Goodman, come over a little bit. Good, 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 good. You can come over. There you go. There we go. Miller, scooch to your left just a tad. There we go. All right. And we're all happy. Three, two. Love it, we're gonna do it again. Three, two, one. Nice, let me make sure. One more time. And three, two, one. There we go. There you go. Thank you. You stay down there. we have on our team, I reminded back when the Diamondbacks won the World Series, Jay Bell, who played second base, but he also played third base, and he played some little bit of outfield, too, and was a heck of a hitter. And so the utility players play a big and vital role in our, I call it a company, but in our county. And so we appreciate all of them, especially the cross-training that takes place. I appreciate all of that as well. Thank you. Okay, number three, presentation to acknowledge County Attorney Kent Volkmer and Sheriff Mark Lamb for their dedicated service and contributions as elected officials in Pinal County. We had requested that this be done so that we could honor these two individuals. I was elected with both of them the first go-around. And it was in 2016 was the election, and I remember being at the place where we were all waiting for the results, and it was a pretty joyous evening that night, and especially being able to be elected with Mark and with Kent. Personally, I've gained a lot of love and appreciation for both of them. The service that they've rendered in this county over the last eight years have been impeccable. The different programs that they've tried to implement to help our society as a whole has been commendable and has been appreciated by many individuals and by families as well. And so I just want to, from the bottom of my heart, express my love and appreciation to each of you and to your families. People don't realize what kind of sacrifice it has made on the family's side when it comes to elections or even serving in the public, where you often get criticized and looked at in a negative way as opposed to looking at some of the positive things. Even very little positive things are brought out by various individuals throughout not only our community but nationwide. And I appreciate these two individuals and what they've done. And so I'd like to do is open it up to each one of our other fellow supervisors to express their feelings as well. So, yeah, we, supervisors, we don't do a lot of the, in the field, hands-on work. What we do is we coordinate. When we have problems, we put the problems in front of the right people to get them solved. And anytime in my first four years, I had a problem related to the attorney's office or the sheriff's department, you just call and it gets done miraculously, without a question. So it's just amazing to have those resources and for the job that they performed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My interaction with Kent goes back 12 years ago plus. We shared offices in the same complex downtown Casa Grande. And when I was first running for county supervisor, we would meet outside in the side block and just kind of talk about things. And he told me, he says, one of these days, I think I might run for county attorney. After my first year of being a county supervisor, I said, you need to run for county attorney, and you need to do it fast. So it's always, it's been a pleasure. Our friendship goes back that far, and he's done terrific work here. Mark Lamb, I don't remember the first time I met Mark, but the county was ready for a change, and he was the right man at the right time to bring this thing around. Whether you agree with his philosophy and his actions in and around the sheriff's office, he has brought some stability to the organization. And Kent built a fantastic team for the county attorney's office as well. So still truly be missed, although I'm sure Kent's and my paths will cross occasionally because of my grandkids and his kids are the same age, so we see each other at a lot of different activities. So anyway, thank you, guys, both, for all you've done, holding an elective office. Don't do it for the money or the thanks, because you ain't gonna get much of either one. So thank you again.
Supervisor McClure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just would like to honor both of them. I think Mark has done a terrific job with the department, bringing budgets in line and building a good team and being responsive to the needs of the community. And as Supervisor Miller said, whether or not you agree with his philosophies, I think he's done a terrific job holding the department together and advocating for his officers. He did a really good job at that. Kent, I've known Kent for a few years. While I used to sit in the audience, I used to disagree with his decisions and tell him so. And he'd say, no, I'm right. No, you're not. And so, okay, you know, fine. But I've grown to respect him over the years, and we have a good relationship, and I've always appreciated his advice, whether I agree or not, but I have always appreciated his advice, and wish you well in your future.
So if we could, we'd like to get a picture. I know that Mark's not here, he's on a flight back to home. And so, Matt, maybe you or Sheriff Tippel or elected Tippels, either one of you would like to come up and accept it, that'd be great, or both of you, actually, that'd be good.
Chairman, as they walk up, can I just say a couple of words?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Just please, thank you. Let me just say to Mark and Kent, to thank you for your time here. It's you both, two of the most genuine, talented leaders that I've ever had the privilege to work for. And thank you for your teamwork and the teams that you put together that have worked so well with us, that all the good that we've been able to do together. And we come here, we have these employees that have been here years, and they say things like, you know, we came here and we stay here for the coworkers. And I tell you, I mean, I know there's a lot... And I'll tell you, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that came here and a lot of people that stay here because of you all. And, you know, it's one of those, I wish the run could last forever, you know, the dynasty. We can get another six more championships, but I think things do change and come to an end. But we'll win many more in other arenas and in other ballfields. Thank you both. It's been a privilege and an honor and we'll see you around.
Kent, would you like to say something?
Yeah. Yes.
I'm waiting for a rebuttal against this guy to my right.
I think what Leo said is really the truth. This is teamwork. You know, when Mark and I came in, we came at the same time. We were facing, we had 750 people that were in our jail every day. Our then-county manager Greg Stanley and Leo sat down with us and said, "Guys, we're hemorrhaging money. Is there a safe way that we can reduce those numbers?" At the same time, we had victims who were seeking necessary medical care that had to travel to North Scottsdale, North Phoenix to get those services. We had kids that had to travel all the way to Phoenix Children, all the way in Phoenix to get necessary medical care. We had people who made dumb decisions that didn't need to be thrown in jail, that didn't need to be, you know, branded a criminal for the rest of their life, but needed assistance. Then you move forward and look into 2020 and we had to deal with the fallout of COVID and all of the, you know, the restrictions that were being placed and all the issues that were occurring and how are we going to keep our law enforcement safe? You move forward to even 2022 and we had some glitches with the election. I mean, there's been a number of sort of hurdles that have been placed, but I will tell you, it's been the honor of a lifetime to work on solving those. All of those issues, you know, we've been able to confront head-on. And what Leo said is what's important. It's not me, it's not Mark. He'll tell you it is. I'm just kidding. It's us as a team. It's us working with our colleagues, us working with you, us working with all the people in the audience, county employees, the public at large. It's when we're all rowing in the same direction is when we're successful. You know, I'll just conclude by saying this. A lot of people keep saying, "Oh, you're going to be going on to bigger and better things." I don't think so. I'll make more money, no doubt about it. I'll have more free time as well. But at the end of the day, there is no greater honor, there's no greater privilege than I will have professionally as serving as the Pinal County Attorney, working with each of you, working with the public to make this the safest large county in the state of Arizona, make this a thriving economic engine. This is something that will never, I'll never be able to replicate. So, I'm not moving on to bigger and better things. And it's, again, it has been an absolute privilege and an honor to serve. I thank everybody for their friendship, for their mentorship, for their willingness to listen to me drivel on and on. So, thank you all.
Obviously, not Mark Lamb. Once again, the shorter, better-looker, better-looking version. If Mark were here, because we've had this discussion, he would tell you what an honor it is to have served as the 24th sheriff of our county. And with that comes a lot of pride and tradition, right? And a lot of people don't know that Mark has a lineage of sheriff in his family because he had an uncle that was a sheriff in Nevada. So, it kind of runs in his blood. And I can tell you that having been at the agency now for over 31 years and Mark being my sixth sheriff and Ross going to be my seventh, I have never met a person that has driven our agency forward as fast and as far as Mark Lamb did. And it has been an absolute honor. And to Kent's point, Mark did do it. It wasn't Kent. It was definitely a team effort. Mark was the guy that came in and extended all of branches in all directions and built bridges rather than tearing them down, which can happen very easily in our profession. And so, he was a bridge builder and his bridges that he built were, they're going to last quite a while because he has solidified those and he is handing those off to Ross. And I know Ross is going to carry those forward as the next sheriff. But he is a legacy and not only in our county, but if you guys, seriously, if you guys went across the country with him like I do, there's sheriffs that want to get selfies with our sheriff. And it's so odd to watch a grown man ask another grown man, let alone a sheriff ask a sheriff to get a selfie with them. So, he is revered across this country as a, not only a great sheriff, but a great man. And so, I know he would really appreciate this honor.
I'd just like to touch on something that I think is very important because Kent Volkmer is a true public servant, but all of Pinal County law enforcement owes him an eternal gratitude. He touched on it earlier, but I can tell you that the longest night I ever spent in law enforcement was taking a female sexual assault victim to Scottsdale and then sitting with her for almost three hours convincing her that it was the important thing to do and the right thing to do for her to wait for her Sane exam. So, when Kent Volkmer took over his office, he met with law enforcement and asked them, "What did we need?" And he got a Sane exam nurses here in Pinal County, which increased our conviction rates for rapists. And all of law enforcement appreciates that, sir. And that's your legacy beyond being a true public servant. And all I can say about Mark is, is he is a great boss and an even better person and it's been an honor to work for him and serve him and serve the people of Pinal County alongside him. And he better be here at 1400 to swear me in.
I wanted to add one other thing about Sheriff Lamb because of the battles that I did the first four years that I was a county supervisor. And when Mark came in, the budget season, the budget process, the whole thing. And we threw a number up here for the sheriff's office. And the only thing he said, and it still sticks with me, "I'll make it work. I'll make it work." He didn't battle, he didn't come in here and demand. I just thought that there was somebody that was willing to roll up their sleeves and get things done. So, it still sticks with me when he said that. Thank you.
Can we get a picture with you three?
Serdy, scooch to your left a little bit. Goodman, just a little to your left, just a tad. There you go. All right, gentlemen, right here. Three, two. Gonna do it a couple times because inevitably somebody's making Google ads. Three, two. And one more. Let me double-check. We're good. Thank you.
Kent, I'll see you at the next test. Supervisor Serdy was fact-checking me on the World Series and who was the utility person back then. It was actually Craig Council. Okay, item number four, supervisor districts' updates regarding notable current or upcoming events. Supervisor McClure.
Nothing in the immediate future, but I, we'll be doing a state of the, my annual state of the county address down in Saddle Brook on the 27th of January. We have about 10 different department heads that show up there and then we videotape it and then we put it up on the website for all to see.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller.
Nothing in particular. Holidays, everybody have a happy one.
Supervisor Serdy.
I don't have anything coming up. I just want to thank all of staff for coming out for my open house and making it successful and a lot of citizens had their questions answered.
Good. Thank you.
By the way, it was good pizza, too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I'd like to, likewise, I'd like to express my gratitude to the staff for coming to our meeting that we had last Monday in regards to state land and giving some entitlements to particular state land as we met with the public. Then also, as always, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays as they're coming upon us and remember to be kind and loving and cheerful and all that other stuff. And then, on the 29th of December, from 5:30 to 6:30, we do this annually with one of the Jewish branches that it's out in this area, we, a lighting of the menorah, which will occur at the facility there in Santan Valley at 5:30 to 6:30. So, those that would like to attend and it's quite a, it's quite an experience to be a part of that and meet with the Jewish people in our community and rub shoulders with them. And so, they really value their traditions and things of that nature, which I think is pretty important in today's world. So, now let's go on to item number five, purchasing division report. Is Angie, oh.
Good morning, Chairman. Goodman and members of the board. I'm Randy Stinson, Deputy Director with the Office of Budget and Finance, filling in for Angie Woods, presenting the purchasing division report for today, December 18th, 2024. In this report, the board is requested to approve one competition impracticable form for a purchase over $100,000. Secondly, the report contains two purchase orders utilizing cooperative purchasing agreements between $100,000 and $250,000 that we are making you aware of. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members? Okay.
Thank you.
We need to vote on this. Do I have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is discussion approval, disapproval of development service review. Matt Busby, Eric Groen and Jarrett Judson and Mary Ellen. How are you this morning?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. I'm Jarrett Judson. Today, we'll be giving an update on internal audit. I believe it's probably been five or six months since we were here last. In that timeframe, we did look at development services. In 2022, there was a review done by Glancy Consulting of what was then corporate development. And as part of that review, there was 55 items that came out for areas for improvement. So, as part of our plan, we wanted to follow up on those items, see where the department had made progress. And what we found was probably 50% of those items have been completed. The department was restructured, there were new resources added, they've added new systems. Ultimately, the big thing coming out of the Mo Glancy report was timeliness of permits being issued and just the amount of time that it took and the steps that it took. And at times, the distance, people had to drive to do things. But by adding, updating Acela, it's providing an opportunity that people can access it remotely and they continue to develop more around that, around the functionality of it. Overall, just the progress they've made, I would say, is tremendous. As I mentioned, there was a lot of observations that came out of it and it all takes time. But is Joe Ortiz here? I actually wanted to see if he wanted to come up and just provide you an update on what the department's done and then what is still planned. As of now, we've got half of those items, expecting to have them done within the next year or so. And then, from an internal audit perspective, we'll probably go back in next August or September just to validate that the rest of those have been closed.
Thank you. Yeah, Joe Ortiz, Development Services, Services Managing Director. Yeah, appreciate the opportunity for a quick few words. For dive into more detail of the audit itself, I really want to give credit to our development services staff because they were a big part of this move. Not only do they have to, had to keep up with daily operations and services, they couldn't just shut the doors and dive into Mo Glancy recommendations. They had to do that plus. And this Mo Glancy report had numerous items that it gave opportunity for staff to reevaluate, take some internal looks of what we do good and what we do frankly bad. So, basically, we were able to evaluate those workflows, those processes and give that opportunity to provide that better service for our customers. So, big shout-out to staff because that was a lot of hours that people just don't see when these type of things happen. So, I really do appreciate it. And talking about Acela itself, yeah, Mo Glancy was a, a lot of recommendations, but one of the big ones was the Acela, bringing it up to the 21st century. I got to give credit to Todd Williams because Todd is our Acela, he didn't know this when he was first hired, but he is our Acela guru. We have to get him a T-shirt that says, has a big A on his chest. But, yeah, we had to have somebody that would champion this and that's Todd's role, one of his roles. And I appreciate that, Todd. So, just real quick, this whole audit, we take it as an opportunity, a positive opportunity, like I said, to do some reevaluation, have that other set of eyes outside of us through the Mo Glancy evaluation that actually, you know how it is, sometimes you get dug into the weeds of what you want to do operationally every day. It's hard to see outside of that. So, this gave us that visual that's really helpful. About, I think, December 2nd, we actually met with the Audit Committee and it actually was another great opportunity for others outside of just our organization to take a look at it and give us some comments and feedback. A lot of positives and as Jarrett mentioned, that another good item that we really hope we'll see some dividends, our big dividends, I think, will happen sometime after June where after all this stuff is actually put in play, implemented, some of those Acela modules that will be directly upfront facing for the customer, some of those virtual modules for inspections. And all those things will actually be operational, I would say, in June. And then, at that point, some of those fruits of our labor will actually come and see some direct positives. And that's kind of why we kind of asked to come back to the Audit Committee in August, September, just so we can reevaluate to see if that fruit is actually there or not. We're pretty confident it will be, but it will be nice to formally come back and say yes or no. So, I know I met individually with some of the board members for specific items. If you'd love to dive into more weeds, we could do that at some point in the future. But I do appreciate the opportunity for this audit. It's a great, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Any questions for myself or Joe on this item?
Any questions? I think Joe's recommendation to do something at a later date would be good to even put it forth to the public as well, some of the steps that we're taking to improve our processes within the community development. So, I recommend that we do that. So, thank you. Thank you.
I believe I'm the next item on the list, too.
Okay, yes, you are.
Next two items.
So, we're on, oh, this does require approval on our part. So, can I get a motion on item number six?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item six as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, item number seven.
Thank you. Item number seven is the internal audit plan. If you remember, probably a year and a half ago, we've developed a three-year audit plan. So wanted to give you an update on where this stands. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, sorry. I didn't realize that was. Perfect. So the first item on here is enterprise resource planning assistance. As we were talking with county management, the county's been thinking about updating or changing their enterprise resource planning modules. They struggle from an HR finance perspective. There's a lot of manual processes. So we came in and did an evaluation and documented items that the county needs from a functionality perspective, and then also recommended certain ERP systems that they should evaluate. So currently, that's sitting with the county management, and there will be next steps that they'll determine on that. And then on the elections, so this was put on there a year and a half ago, and since then, the county has initiated a separate initiative to look at elections. So right now, we're just reevaluating whether or not this is needed or what the scope should be if it is needed.
Okay.
Data governance, we're canceling that because if the county goes to a new ERP system, that old data is no longer necessary. So it'll be done as part of the the implementation process. And then community development, we spoke about that. And constituent relations, so we put this on there, and we went back and we looked at all of the feedback we received. It all related to permitting. So we figured that at this point in time, it's better to put resources elsewhere because of the follow-up with development services really addresses what we thought the scope would be on that.
Okay.
And then probably February or March timeframe, we're going to do kind of a mid-year follow-up on our risk assessment, just to see what emerging risks are, see whether or not we need to adjust the plan. I think, as you're aware, that this is not a solid plan. Like, if there's something that's more important to the county, we'll certainly adjust this plan. And then the last audit we'll do for fiscal year '25 is capital projects. We are still determining what the scope will be. We've got, we will schedule meetings with county management in early next year, just to talk through the scope and what makes most sense and and biggest benefit for the county. Any questions?
Any questions? No. We don't?
Okay.
So that takes care of item number seven?
Yes.
Okay, now we're on to item number eight. I think this has you or?
Yes. So this is just an update on the silent whistle. It has been pretty silent. In July, we had two items that came in on the same day. They were not relevant to internal audit. It's nothing that internal audit would follow up on, but we did work with county management to get those items to the department that it related to. And county management has followed up with the department to make sure that those those items were addressed.
Okay.
That's all I got for you today.
Okay, any other questions? We're good. Hey, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Okay, item number nine, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or any member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So is anybody from the board would like to have anything pulled? County manager? Anybody from the public? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward on the consent items?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A through AL as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? And it's unanimous. Okay. We will close, we will recess the Board of Supervisors regular meeting to convene into a district meeting. And meetings of the Pinal County Flood District Board, we now open. So is there any items on the flood district? They're all consent items, and they're indicated by an asterisk and will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time that it's presented. Anybody from the board want to pull anything? County manager? Public? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve all one of the consent items on the flood control district agenda.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous. Okay, we'll close Pinal County Flood District, and we'll open now the Pinal County Health District Board of Directors. This is consent items A and B, and they will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or anybody from the public wishes to object at the time that it's presented. Anybody on the board want to pull anything to discuss it? County manager? Anybody from the public? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A and B on the Public Health Services District Board of Directors.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay, we will now close the Pinal County Health Service District and reconvene our regular Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting. And we're on to item number 12, call to the public.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, before we go to the call to the public, just for the record, if I can announce that Supervisor Kavanoff has joined the meeting. Supervisor Kavanoff?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 12, call to the public. A call to the public is the time period for members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors to provide public input relating to subject matters within the Board of Supervisors' authority or jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling it for further consideration and decision at a later date. So do we have any cards for a call to the public? I don't have any. So is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Mr. Rett?
I'm Noel Rett from Eloy. Chairman Goodman, we have an ongoing differences of opinion regarding decorum during these meetings, but I won't belabor that today. But I do want to note that I'm not advocating censorship. I am asking the chair and the board to show the same concern regarding inappropriate behavior to all in attendance. Next, Chairman Goodman and board, I repeat my requests regarding Project 2025, which to this point has been ignored. But first, I acknowledge Supervisor Miller's professionalism and his willingness to examine the document to determine any further action. This is a pay now or a pay later situation. You can productively or proactively address the document or blithely keep the blinders on and deal with unhappy citizens and staff when the policies are put in place, some of which are already underway. There are policies that are glaringly germane to at least 16 of the 34 Pinal County Departments and Offices and probably more. For some policies, the connections are interwoven throughout the government, such as mass deportation outlined in Chapter 5 by Ken Cuccinelli. Or policies to supposedly protect American farmers as outlined by Darren Bast in Chapter 10, the same farmers that got blasted by the tariffs during Trump's first term, requiring a $28 billion taxpayer bailout for primarily soybean farmers who lost their Chinese markets. Unintended consequences, China then turned to Brazil, which stopped down more of the rainforest for soybeans to meet Chinese demand. I wonder how Pinal County cotton, barley, wheat, and alfalfa will be affected by new tariffs. Other policies are more narrowly focused focused toward air quality, county attorney, elections, environmental health, emergency management, public health, school superintendent, and sheriff. Public health should be concerned about what vaccine deniers RFK Jr. and the nominated Deputy Deputy Secretary Buttigieg have cooked up, as outlined in Chapter 14 by Roger Severino. Goodbye to the CDC and the NIH. What a contrast that is to Jibet Franco, who was honored today. Other connections are less apparent, like fleet services. It would be a good idea to put vehicle orders in now, as any vehicle, foreign or domestic, will cost thousands more with the tariffs attached, tariffs thoroughly embraced by Peter Navarro in Chapter 26. Chairman Goodman, please don't further ignore my request. To do so is frankly dereliction of duty. Will you or will you not call for a proactive study? If not, in the interest of transparency, the people of Pinal County deserve to know why not. I'd also like to leave an article, if I could, from the Arizona Republic regarding, titled Farmers Could Lose Billions in Trade War. That's what's coming with the tariffs. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close call to the public at this time. We'll go to number, item number 13, public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 121824-RD24-081, an abandonment abandonment of a street. Celeste?
Good morning, Chairman. Members of the board, Celeste Garza, Deputy Director of Public Works for Development Services. Item 13 is a portion of the TP Street patineesment that we own in Northern Apache Junction. TP doesn't currently exist in this location. Let me show you a map here. To the north, we maintain Pioneer Street, and to the south, we maintain Rawhide. This is 33 feet that resides, you know, 330 feet between the two. So it kind of functions, I think, as an alleyway, or it was maybe planned in the future. Currently, it's not being used for anything. I think the property owner, Mr. Lukowski, would like to use this back portion of his property. He's located at 5A there. All the surrounding property owners are in agreement with the abandonment, as well as the utilities. This is, this is looking north from his property, and this is looking east towards the superstitions. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, there's a public hearing and comment from the public as well. So I'll open that up right now. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak in regards to this item? Seeing that there's none, we'll proceed with a vote on this one. Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. That's why you're here. Now can I get a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to approve item number 13 as presented.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay, item number 14, public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance number 204-PZ-003-24. Glenn, you want to talk to us about this one?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. So this case, as you mentioned, there's two of them actually. There's a PZ 003-24 and PZ PD 026-23. There we go. This is otherwise known as Magic Wrench, parcel N. Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm right clicking. It's not advancing. Oh, that one, okay. Okay, there we go. So this is a request rezoned and a plan area development to allow for a development of a single-family subdivision. It's 40 acres in size, southwest of Arizona Farm Road and Quail Run Lane. Owner applicant is TSI Elwood Properties, and it's represented by Sean Hamill. So the requested action, and very simply, is to continue the case to January 29th, and that's to make adjustments for two potential stipulations that were added by engineering. The latest, I believe the applicant is okay with those. Then the other, here's the stipulations listed in their entirety. And the the last issue is for, there's a table that was to be amended by the applicant and a added stipulation, number 15, that was added by the commission to reflect the change from a three to five-foot minimum setbacks for detached accessory buildings. So we'll need time to adjust everything for that. So we'll bring it back for the January 29th agenda. So staff, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Do we have any questions, board members? Okay. Because this does have a public hearing opponent, is there anybody from the public? I'm going to open a public hearing right now. Anybody from the public that would like to speak in regards to this project? And actually, is there two of them together, right? Or is it three?
Two.
It's just the two? So if you've got any comments, be regards to both of them. And it doesn't seem like there's any, so I'm going to close public hearing for both of these. And then can I get a motion? It sounds like they want to move it to Jan- January 29th, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Have to do them separately, too.
Separate, separate vote.
We'll do them separate votes. Are we going to need to do a public hearing there, too, at that point?
Glenn just confirmed that it's okay that it was closed.
Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I move we approve, approve the applicant's recommendation to continue item 14 to January 29, 29, January 29th, 2025 board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? That one's unanimous. Item number 15, can I get a motion on that one?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve applicant's recommended motion to continue to January 29, 2025 board meeting, item number 15.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, thank you. Now we're on to item number 16, public hearing and discussion approval disapproval resolution Looks like Glenn, you're still on.
Correct. So this, this next.
Hold on a second, okay. So.
Chairman, just for the record, that this is going to be for items 16, 17, and 18.
That's what I was just going to ask. Okay, okay.
So this is three cases here related to Oracle Valley Estates, PZ PA 021-21, PZ 036-21, and PZ PD 036-21. This is a request here for a non-major comprehensive plan amendment, rezon and a plan area development to allow for manufactured home and park model and recreational vehicle development. Size is just under nine acres and a location southwest of West American Avenue in North Cayev, Atlantia. Owner applicant is Oracle Valley Estates, and Donald Westfall is the agent. And I believe we have the applicants here today for any questions. This shows you the overall general location here, just south of Mammoth. This is the the current zoning map. Shows you an aerial photo of the of the property. And this is the conceptual site plan for that. Initially, they had proposed the amenities to be more in the centralized location, and then through further refinement, they've adjusted it. So it's now in that current proposed location in the southeastern portion. And here's a little bit of a zoom in on the conceptual amenities here. Currently, the the park, it's been there since about 1970, and it really doesn't have any amenities currently. So this is going to be a great improvement, it looks like, to add these things here for the those in the park. Here's looking north into the park area. And this is to the south, to the east. And this is to the south, to the east, and to the west. So, the rezoning of the park will allow a lot of these improvements to progress and allow a greater variety of dwellings and apply the newer districts standards as, and... It's been existing for a substantial amount of time. There was one item of opposition that we received that the flavor of the opposition was primarily due to the dilapidated somewhat nature of the park. It's been many different owners over the years, and so, with this seeking to improve the park, it seems like that would assuage the concerns that were brought up with that. Planning and zoning commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval with one stipulation for the rezon case and 12 attached to the PAD case. And staff, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
None, not at this time.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is the applicant here? Do we want to hear from the applicant?
Good morning. I'm Kevin McDougall, the engineer for the project, representing the developer, the owner. And thank you for hearing this case today. And thank you, Glenn, for presenting. I did a good job mentioning the main points of this application. The park has existed, like you said, since the 70s, and this is basically an improvement. And the one complaint was relating to improving the park. And so, the owner has tried to turn in and get building permits, but he has to go through this process before he can do any improvements. So, the intent is to improve the property and improve the community and hire some people to work. Does the Board of Supervisors have any questions for me?
You're looking at me like I'm gonna... No, I appreciate the fact that you're coming in to upgrade that property because it is a nice order. It's also right at the entrance to the school, so that's what everybody sees when they come into Oracle. So, it will be a nice upgrade for the area.
Thank you.
Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, I just want to thank somebody for taking this on. I, it looks like it needs some infusion of cash that could put it up, but it's probably pretty markable now, you know, markability to be able to create some affordable housing as well, so...
Bring it up to current standards.
Bring it up to current standards.
Yeah.
I applaud it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor, sorry, nothing?
No.
Okay. All right. This is a public, I need to open up the component for all three of these items, for the public hearing component. So, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in regards to any one of these three items? Mr. McDougall? Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, and so, but you don't want to say more? You're good? All right. Okay. Being that there's nobody from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll now vote, or if I can get a motion on item number 16, that'd be good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 16 as presented with no stipulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Item number 17?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 17 as presented with one stipulation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Ayes have it. And item number 18?
One more time once. Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 18 as presented with 12 stipulations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay. All right, Mr. Beck, item number 19. This is a public hearing and discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 2024 SUP0111-24. Glenn?
Mr. Chair, Board members, SUP011-24. This is a request for a special use permit for a new wireless communications facility that'd be attached to an existing utility pole. Size of the overall site's two and a half acres. This is located northeast of South Mountain Road and Highway 60. Owner applicant's SRP, and it's represented by Ashley Scott. This shows you the overall location here in the east AJ area. Current zoning map. Shows you an aerial. And this is the conceptual site plan. So, the utility pole here, this shows the elevation. And this is a photo sim provided by the applicant of what it looks like now and then, what it would look like if to be approved. Looking to the north from the site, across the street to the south, and then, to the east and to the west. So, items of consideration is enhanced coverage needs for the AJ area. This would be placed on existing poles, so no new pole needed or anything. Traffic impacts are course minimal, and no letters of opposition were received. Planning and zoning commission voted 9-0 to recommend approval with 15 stipulations. The applicant is requesting removal of stipulation number six, which was added by engineering. And so, here for the board's edification is the stipulation in its entirety that the applicant is requesting the removal of. And engineering has expressed that they're okay with that, so I would leave then with 14 remaining stipulations. Staff, are you happy to entertain any questions the board may have?
Any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Oh, would you like to speak, or? You bet.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Goodman and members of the board. My name is Ashley Scott. I'm here with Salt River Project requesting a special use permit for a new wireless communication facility. This site will be a T-Mobile site co-located on an existing SRP utility pole. T-Mobile is committed to providing leading-edge technology to meet customer demand in Pinal County. And new wireless communication facilities are essential to allow residents, visitors, and businesses access to high-quality, reliable T-Mobile service for personal business and emergency needs. This site, this site will be located at SRP Carroll Substation. It will be on 32nd Avenue, just east of South Mountain View Road, on the most eastern of the two poles directly in front of the substation. This will be a, this will have a four-foot wide array with two antennas per sector mounted at 80-foot rad center. All ground equipment will be behind the wall of Carroll Substation, completely screened from view. Again, here's another, the photo simulation Glenn provided, what's existing and what is proposed. And with that, we just respectfully ask for your permission to move forward with this project, and I welcome any questions you have. Thank you.
Is there any questions, board members? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Could you have the applicant describe a little bit further why item six, or stipulation six, was removed and why engineering agreed?
Yeah, so, stipulation number six reads, "The above-proposed site plan should have a paved road access to the project, paved parking stalls unless not required by traffic public works engineer." I did reach out to John from, John Kraft from Pinal Traffic Engineer regarding the stipulation. He did say that SRP can install four-foot inch, he said SRP may install aggregate base course, four-inch in depth in the parking area to keep dust down in lieu of the asphalt pavement. So, we would just like to remove that stipulation. But, other than that, SRP is in agreement with all other stipulations.
Okay, thank you.
Any thoughts on that?
If I may.
You bet. Supervisor Miller?
This is not a site that'll have employees going to it every day.
No.
It's just like, every once in a while, somebody has to go in and do some maintenance or something.
Yeah, it's, SRP will be the owner of the site, so we'll maintain, construct, and control that site there. So, it will only have SRP employees.
But it also, it's not a daily thing.
No.
That's my point. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by anybody? Okay. All right. We, there's a, there's a public hearing component to this. Is, I'm gonna open up a public hearing now. Anybody from the public wish to speak in regards to this? Seeing that there's none, I'll now close the public hearing and see if we can get a motion moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 19 as presented with 14 stipulations, removing stipulation number six.
Okay, and do, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, that's it. Well, I just want to remind everybody that, and acknowledge that Supervisor Kavanaugh, this is his last meeting, and I express our gratitude for his service. Looking forward to working with the new supervisor moving forward. With that, we're adjourned.
Everyone else has left the call.